Okay. Are we gonna go?
Yeah.
Okay.
So maybe we just wait for more of it?
I was just gonna ask if you could move forward some.
Are we gonna go?
Yeah.
Yeah, I know who's on.
Okay, so maybe we just wait for more of it?
Well, I just don't know that that's still.
So Chief Parker and I just wanted to be.
Yes, I'm tired.
Yep.
And can I get confirmation of appropriate meeting notice?
Meeting notice is posted on Friday, May 12th, and Milton City Hall, Milton Piggly Wiggly, and Hometown Ace Hardware.
Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, pledge of allegiance. Whoever wants to take it, it's fine by me. I think we'll just skip the proclamations tonight, and we'll go right to the consent agenda.
Motion to approve the consent agenda?
Or public comments? Are there any public comments? Okay. Now we'll go to the consent agenda.
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That motion carries. All right, discussion and possible action regarding a conditional use permit for Signature Warehousing.
So last April, the City of Milton Common Council approved a TIF development agreement with Signature Warehousing LLC to construct a hundred thousand square foot plus facility on a 23 acre parcel of land that was sold to Signature Warehousing on the south side of Putman Parkway in the Crossroads Business Park. Since that time, Signature Warehousing has been working with their architects and engineers to refine their site plan, and a final site plan was submitted along with a conditional use permit request for their development project. The conditional use permit request is in regards to any facility that is constructed in the City of Milton over a hundred thousand square feet requires a conditional use permit, as well as a rail or truck terminal facility, which Signature Warehousing will be of that type of facility once finally constructed. Their site plan went before the Plan Commission earlier this evening and was unanimously approved. Additionally, a public hearing was held in regards to the conditional use permit. The only individual that spoke was, was the attorney representing Signature Warehousing, as well as their soon to be new neighbors, Claus and Quality Chocolate spoke as well. That motion was forwarded to the common council with a favorable recommendation for the conditional use permit. City staff has received no other inquiries, questions, or concerns regarding the public notice that was sent out on behalf of the conditional use permit public hearing. So with that being said, city staff would recommend approval of the CUP as presented.
Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve Signature Warehouse CUP and two separate?
Nope.
Just, okay, conditional use permit.
Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That motion carries. Presentation by Brian Della, PMA Financial Network, and possible action regarding Resolution 2023-12, providing for the sale of $2,250,000 in general obligation promissory notes. Series 2023.
So as Brian makes his way to the podium, kind of give just a little preamble. Mr. Brian Della, representing PMA, has been our financial consultant for, I don't know, the last year or so, but specifically was very involved in the infrastructure package that we brought forth to the council earlier this year, which the council approved. As you may recall, that was roughly an eight million dollar borrowing of that, only a small portion of it was general obligation. So that's what's on the agenda tonight, is the resolution, which would approve the 2.25 million dollar GO promissory note advertisement. Is that the?
Yeah, so, thanks Al.
Yep.
So yeah, so what we're gonna do today is if the council would like to, we're gonna, or well, you guys are gonna have the resolution authorizing us to move forward, and then we would come back in, presumably in June, as long as, you know, we'd like to sell with a copy of your 2022 audited financials in the, in the offering document. So as long as those are able to sort of come, you know, in the next week or so, we'll be able to get those in, in time for the rating analyst and get it in the offering document, move forward. But we can, there we sort of touch on that in the presentation. It's just, it's a pretty simple presentation, you know. You know, as Al mentioned, I think most of the work we did really here was in the financial planning phases of, of, you know, with the city. And it's really, that's the way, that's really the way it should be. So if we just flip over slide two, today it's just authorizing us to move forward with the, you know, with the process and the, in the sale of, scheduling the sale for the 2.25 million dollar Geo Promissory Notes. The good news is, is they won't affect your tax levy, because these are for water projects and sewer projects, so that'll be paid for out of the water system and the sewer system. So the projects that you have for the water and sewer system are in excess of this 2.25 million, but you have money inside both, or available within both enterprise funds. So you have some cash on hand, you're going to be generating cash, and then supplemented with the 2.25 million, that's enough to do the projects over the next couple of years. So as, you know, slide three just is putting to words that, that four-year CIP, we, you know, that PMA and the city worked together on looking at water projects, sewer projects, stormwater projects, and then the, the, the general city capital projects, which are paid for with the property tax levy. So even though this is general obligation debt, the water and the sewer system are gonna pay for it. And this is, by, by utilizing your geo-dec capacity for the utilities, it's, it'll, it'll come in at a much lower interest rate, there's no, there's no, versus a revenue bond, there's no, like, debt service requirement of cash, cash set aside for investors. So it's, it's a very, very effective way, especially with this kind of dollar amounts. So slide four just shows how we're looking at doing this. You know, the city informed me that the policies were to keep these at seven years, their payment back in seven years, so that's what we've done. The water system and the sewer system are gonna pay for just, you know, the annual payments are gonna be about the same, as close as we can make them the same each year. And you can see, that's how we're gonna pay this back, or the utilities are gonna pay this back in short order. This was the sort of numbers I showed in the past, at 4%. You know, the rates will come in at lower than that, so this is, you know, sort of we'll call it a top line, or, you know, something we should be, should be beating, you know, less interest next month. And now, I just was looking at this when I, when I sat down for a second, I don't know, the first date on here is obviously not wrong, it's, today is May 16th, not February 22nd. But besides that, the rest of the schedule is, looks accurate to me. We're just hoping to get the audited financials sent over to Moody's next week, and then the day after Memorial Day, we'll have a rating call, and hopefully all the, the rating, you know, they'll have that audit to review, and they'll have, that'll answer a lot of their questions. And then if we can stay on schedule, you know, if the, you know, if the auditors are able to do that, we're gonna stay on schedule, and we're gonna sell, we're gonna come back here on the June 20th. So on June 20th, just like you've done in the past, or typically, not always, I guess typically, as you've done in the past, we're gonna have a 10:00 AM time to collect bids. We'll, we have a, you know, sort of internet-based system, we'll open the bids, we'll see who's the lowest rate, we'll adjust as necessary, we'll send the information to Corals and Brady or Bond Council, they'll quick update the resolution. So the resolution that's gonna be in your packet for Tuesday, June 20th, won't have the details of the, you know, the winning bid, but, you know, we'll, there'll just be a few holes in that, and then we'll, we'll come in on that morning, get the information to Corals, they'll quick email it back, and then I'll come in and, you know, a little presentation like this, just letting you know who bid, and, you know, what the rate is, and what the final date of our schedule is, and stuff like that. So that's the end of my short presentation. If there's any questions on this, or any other things we've sort of been working on here this, this year with the city, let me know.
Any questions?
Very good presentation.
All right, thank you very much. Discussion. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution? And it's a roll call vote.
I'll move to adopt Resolution 2023-12. Do you want?
Is there a second?
Second.
I don't think we need any more than that. Okay, Jenny will do the roll call. I will call for the roll call votes, so Holberg?
Aye.
Clark?
Aye.
Rouge?
Aye.
Walker?
Aye.
Stockman?
Aye.
Okay, that motion passes. All right, item number 13, discussion and possible action regarding Ordinance 23512, repealing and recreating Section 1081, adapting one-family to family dwelling billing, building code.
Okay, so this is part of a requirement, we have planned delegation from the Department of Safety and Professional Services for our building inspectors, that's general engineering, to complete commercial inspections, and then also review the plans in lieu of going to the states. So it cuts down the timeframe for projects to be started, and so with that, they did review our information that is within our ordinance, and this is just an update to make sure that our ordinance reflects what's in the state statutes.
Could you go through exactly what it's stating? That's in the statutes that we're changing?
I can go through as, as much as I know. So most of this is very similar to what we have, a big portion of this, and is, that we did not have in our ordinance, is campers. So that is something that we may not actually have a lot of use for in this community at this point, but it, in the future it may. But that is one thing that specifically we were missing in our ordinance. And again, that was something within the last, I believe it's between five and seven years, that they had updated. Many communities don't actually have it in their ordinance currently, but it's periodically, they're, the DSPS is reaching out to these communities to let them know that for future they would like a change. Is that it's the question?
Yes, yeah, that does. And then my other question is, so then, does that mean, does this mean that we have the ability to inspect just on, just on the building, during construction, right?
So what this actually does, there is quite a few different delegations that the state gives to the city for the building inspector, and that is residential, so one-family, two-family, and then what they consider commercial above that. And so we already had a lot of these delegations. One portion that we did not have delegation for, we had the, for inspection, fully for inspection, but we did not have it for reviewing plans. So then they would have to go to the state, and instead of maybe two weeks, let's say, depending on the complexity of the plan, it would take four to six weeks or plus, depending on what their staff level was at that point. After reviewing a specific project, then they realized that we did not have that, and requested that, that we update all of our plan delegations. So again, that's everything from inspections for one-family, two-family, and then a commercial and up. So essentially, this is something they review every so often, but because we didn't have the plan review delegation for commercial, that's how it came up. And it was not a requirement, but it was something that they would request to us.
So it, does this also apply to rental property?
Yeah, I can answer that, yeah. What, what this ordinance applies to is one and two-family dwellings, so whether, it doesn't matter how it's owned, whether it's owner occupied or rental occupied, it's, it's one or two-family residential structures is what this ordinance applies to. And as Jenny indicated, basically, it's, it's exact, almost exactly the same as the existing ordinance, except for two things. One, it updates the administrative code references, because those were, right, 30, 40 years old, if that, and they didn't have any, so, so it was hard to figure out exactly what they're referencing. And then it adds SPS 327, as Jenny indicated, to permit the inspection of camping units. Is that something Milton's ever gonna do? Probably not, but by, by code, it's required. If you're going to have a inspection of one and two-family dwellings, you need to also inspect camping units. So that's what we're doing.
Thank you.
Any other questions by anyone? Okay, is there?
I'll make a motion to approve the first reading, waive the second and third, and adopt Ordinance 2023-12.
Second.
Good job. Any questions or comments? All those in favor? Aye. All those opposed? Say no. All right, that ordinance passes. Discussion and possible action regarding purchasing locating equipment for the water utility.
So this is just to purchase a new locator for the water utility. The current locator we have is several years old and has proven to be inadequate several, several times over the last couple of years. Staff obtained a couple quotes from vendors, the low quote was provided by Subsurface Solutions, the total amount is $7,633, and will be funded by the water utility.
Any questions?
I'll make a motion to approve the purchase of locating equipment from Subsurface Solutions for the amount specified.
All right, anything else for you? All those in favor? Say aye.
This is for the sidewalk project for this year. There was two parts of the project, Lamar Park and Story Gardens. We had applied for a grant for the Lamar Park portion of the project. Unfortunately, we didn't receive the grant, so we're just requesting the award of the Story Gardens bid amount. JB Johnson Brothers out of Edgerton provided the low bid, bids are open on April 12th. So again, just looking for approval of the award of the 2023 sidewalk improvements work at Story Gardens.
Any questions? Is there a motion?
I'll move to where the 2023 sidewalk improvements work at Story Gardens.
Is there a second?
Second.
That's specifically to, I think, JB Johnson Brothers? Correct. Correct?
Yeah, that's correct.
All those in favor? Anyone opposed? All right, here he is. Discussion and possible action regarding an agreement with TDS Metrocom LLC for cost recovery related to plan review costs.
So as you recall, TDS Metrocom is bringing facilities to the City of Milton. It's quite a large project, and by ordinance, we are required to permit the work. Due to the size of the project and the amount of the work involved, it's beyond what the existing staff has the capacity to do, so we have entered into a, or prepared an agreement with TDS that allows for us to use consultants to perform the plan review work, and they will reimburse us for the costs of that work. So if approved, the agreement would require no city funds to be spent outside of a little time to create the agreement.
Questions?
Yeah, and just to clarify too, Attorney Schrader brought up a good point, that it does include provisions to repair streets that will be affected by the work.
Any questions? Is there a motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, presentation of 2022 Consumer Confidence Report.
So this is just our annual consumer confidence report for the water utility. We're just required to present it to the public. We do that by several means, published with the information with the water utility, as well as here at council, no action is required.
Do you have any questions about it? All right, discussion of committee appointments.
So the city had openings on Community Development Authority and the Historic Preservation Commission. We had two people that became interested in these committees, and Brooks Gullman for Community Development Authority and Historic Preservation Commission, Katie Gullman. The mayor reviewed their applications and has recommended their appointments to these committees, but will need to be confirmed by the council. Any questions or comments? Is there a motion?
Make the motion to approve the appointments to the committees, as stated.
Is there a second? All those in favor? All right, I'm super excited, they're new to Milton, and it's always nice when we have new people that wanna get involved with our local government. Chief Pickering, did you want to do an update? And thank you so much for coming. Because then I don't have to do a long email.
We doing okay on time tonight? Because we got a couple of cool things to talk about, so I don't wanna...
Take your time, because we can skip team building. We're running too late. I'll let council vote on skipping team building.
Members of the board, no. Y'all have a copy of the report. The volumes continue, and actually seem to be continuing to grow. There was one point today where we had all three ambulances out of one of the stations on the road. The good news is, with the fact that we've got the two stations now, we're able to provide coverage back and forth, right? So we had three ambulances on the road, we had two more that were available in case we needed them. So something you'll hear me say a lot is, the system's working. We've got a long ways to go. We gotta, you know, we're still, you know, putting it together and building it, but it is, it's working really well. Hundred and sixty-one calls, 911 calls for the month of April. Six hundred and ninety-five calls for the year, that does not include January before the integration, so just those numbers alone should, you know, sort of catch you by surprise. City of Milton, forty-three calls for the month. It was twenty-five, a little over 25% of the overall district volume for the month. Hundred and thirty-eight calls so far for the year. So we're, we're starting to get sort of that trending as to where our volume is and, and how it plays out and that kind of thing. Fire inspections, we're doing really, really well there. I sincerely have to compliment Chief Parker, Jeremy, he heads up our Prevention and Inspection Bureau. Milton is keeping him very busy with a lot of the growth, that's a good thing, but he is doing just a phenomenal job, and we are, you know, we're ahead of where we ought to be at this point in time, and that's a good thing. So that's, we're pleased there. Staffing is where I'm gonna probably take a little bit of time. We have an expression of interest out to our existing paid-on-call and paid-on-premise employees. We have three full-time openings to be filled, and then we have a couple of over-hires that the board has authorized us to go ahead and do in anticipation of getting ready for 2024, '25, when we bring Milton East online, and we're gonna continue to work on that, right? So that when we bring that second station online, we're not trying to go out and find nine people overnight, which just plain don't exist. Right now, we have, and I'm just more excited than I can tell you, we have more applicants than we have openings for, and, and so it's gonna be kind of tough, because there's some people that aren't gonna, you know, it's, it's a good problem to have. The one thing we started to do, you've heard from me over and over again, the labor pool is drained, and, and the Rock County labor pool is just drained. I mean, if there's a paramedic hiding out there that Janesville, Beloit, or Lakeside doesn't know about, I, I don't know where they're hiding. So one of the things that we did was, we started expanding the circle a little bit and getting out of Rock County, and trying to promote, if you will, advertise the good things we've got going on with, with what we're doing here, see if we can get some interest. Somehow we have sparked some interest out of Waukesha County. We've already hired two full-time employees, both of them paramedics, out of Waukesha County, and I just extended a job offer to a third today, and then told all three of them to keep looking and find me a couple more. And so there's a lot of good that's coming out of that effort, setting up an interview with an individual out of Rockford. So again, what we're trying to do is just kind of get out of the sphere, instead of trying to turn over every rock, let's just go look, you know, in places where there might be candidates. So extremely pleased about that. Um, let's just go look, you know, in places where there might be candidates, so extremely pleased about that. Um, probably one of the most exciting things that we've got going on is kind of a youth awareness program. It's, it kinda grew out of this grow our own concept. Um, and several of us have really close ties with the schools in the area from an athletic standpoint and just working with the schools. Um, Chief Pancuscus from Janesville Fire and I, uh, along with several people from Janesville Fire, um, we were in front of eight hundred students at Janesville Craig. They brought in every tech ed class all day long for eight hours. Um, we're working on something similar with Janesville Parker. Um, we've had conversations with Milton Schools, Edgerton Schools, um, about how we do this. That's not an overnight solution. We're not gonna get anybody out of the high school that's gonna take the spots we've got right now. But what we're realizing is we've gotta do something to spear some interest in the emergency services as a profession. Um, so if we don't start at the junior high and at the senior high, um, you know, five years from now, we're gonna still have this problem. So we're, we're, we're trying to solve the immediate problem. We're also trying to address the long term. Out of that, um, a lot of you are aware, um, we have the cadet program, which are the high school, um, young boys and girls in the high school. Right now, that is, uh, Evansville High School, Stoughton High School and Edgerton High School. We've had several conversations with the staff at Milton. Um, they're almost, well, they're more than excited about wanting to try to get into this for the fall of twenty twenty-three. So we're working with the, the administration and the curriculum staff at Milton to try to figure out how to do that. Little problem when you try to do semesters and trimesters and try to figure out how to do that. Um, the thing that's developed in the last week, so the board hasn't even heard this yet. Um, we do it as a fire cadet program, but there's been a lot of interest in adding a medical component to it, emergency medical technician component to it. Um, we worked with the technical colleges and they just flat out said, we don't have instructors. We, you know, you know, yeah, you can have a class, but I don't have anybody to, to, to teach it. Um, and they don't see that problem solving itself, uh, anytime soon. So if you haven't sort of picked up on a theme yet, when somebody tells us that they can't solve it for us, we just go figure out how to do it ourselves. Um, we've talked to our existing staff. I have two people, uh, two full-time individuals that have education degrees and we're now working with the state technical college system to get them certified to teach, uh, emergency medical technician training. And so we're just gonna start doing it ourselves. Um, and, um, so I think, you know, again, it's just kind of this, every, we're just gonna keep trying, right? I mean, the problem's not gonna go away. Um, but we're just gonna keep trying stuff and, and there's a lot of interest as it relates to this EMT program. Milton Schools is extremely interested in that component. Um, the curriculum director said, uh, she'll have a full class for us in the fall if we want it. So, uh, good stuff there. On the back, um, finances, finances are looking really good. Um, I caution the board not to get too excited about, um, how far below budget we are on expense. Um, we're in the process of converting to the new accounting system and I guarantee you, there's a stack that our business manager hasn't gotten loaded yet. So we know that that number isn't quite as nice as it looks on paper. Uh, but I can also tell you, it's not gonna change from green, uh, to red. We're, we're doing good there. Um, what else we got going on? One thing that the Milton community and Milton area will start to see, um, the relabeling of the Milton apparatus with the Lakeside name on it, probably gonna start here in the next week or so. Uh, the company that did all the original lettering, we went back to the company that did the original lettering, figuring that's just the better way to go with that. Um, they've got all the stuff in and getting it ready, so we'll sort of start working on getting the, the rebranding, uh, taken care of. And the two new ambulances, uh, Chief, uh, Whitmore and I were down in Sterling, Illinois on Friday last week doing the inspection on the two new ambulances. They look really good. Um, they are, they are very, very good, well-built ambulances. Couple of minor things, um, that had to get cleaned up, so we would expect to see them probably in about two or three weeks. Um, we're waiting for radios, back order. Um, so it'll probably be a month or so before we get everything in and get them actually, um, in service, but, um, good progress there. I appreciate you giving me the time. I mean, I really do. I think there's been a lot of interest in the community. You folks went through a lot in terms of what you had the courage to do. Um, we understand we gotta deliver for you, um, so I wanna make sure you know the kind of things that we're working on.
Thank you very much. Is there any questions? Does anybody have any questions? Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay. Committee reports. Anybody have any committee reports? Parks and Rec, um, Mets? Anything from them?
Um, just for Parks and Recreation Commission, the commission is going to be pursuing the Monarch City USA designation. So there's a brief application that we have to submit and it's a fifty-dollar fee. Um, but then looking in the future of doing more monarch butterfly programming and, um, conservation effort, efforts in the community. Um, and Ashley, if you wanna just maybe mention the monarch butterfly program that's happening in June too?
Yes, let me look up the date really, really quick. Um, so Ashley and Angie, or Ashley and Jamie at the library did a monarch club last summer and they're gonna do a one-day, um, all about monarchs at the library. And I think we're still gonna be potentially growing butterflies in the library again this year, so, um, let me look up the date really quick.
Sorry to put you on the spot.
No, that's okay.
It is.
Yes.
I can't believe we don't have a proclamation. I know we do.
So Tuesday, June twenty-seventh at five PM, it's How to Raise Monarchs. So Ashley and Jamie will be leading that one.
And, uh, just quick, Max Olson, he's our, used to be middle school, uh, Parks and Recreation Commission member. Now he's transitioning to the high school membership. Um, he's the one who brought this to the commission to consider, so thank you for that.
I hear there's a good sign on bonus.
I have a question.
Go ahead, Linda.
I have a question for Parks and I don't know if you can answer this or not. I saw in the minutes that there were some invasive species over at the Menland Prairie. Do we know if that is also at Cross Ridge?
Um, we did ask at the meeting if there was any concerns with Cross Ridge. We asked the Benlins, there are, there are prairie experts in the community. Um, they did not have any concerns. I think it's a wet prairie specifically invasive species. Mark shaking his head yes.
Yeah, that was their, the, it's a little bit different types of prairies between the two sites. So the concerns that they were addressing at the Benland Prairie were plants that wouldn't likely be found at Cross Ridge.
Anything else?
I have a general item.
Go ahead.
This weekend is Milton Living History Days at the Milton House and North Goodrich Park. And a couple of things to mention with that. One, first of all, we'll keep our eyes open for road closures during the weekend. So just throwing that out there now to help Mark out and Chief out. Uh, right now, Friday, we're looking at having twelve hundred people come to the school day event. Uh, three hundred of those are from Northside. And, uh, we have twenty-four different stations teaching them different aspects of the Civil War for Friday. So it's gonna be a nice, busy, fun day. And then the weekend, uh, have a whole bunch of activities going on throughout the entire weekend. Couple of new things is there's, uh, toilet tours being done for, on Saturday. So somewhat one in the fall, but it's a little more of a Civil War theme to it. And then also there's a raffle to be able to fire off a cannon.
Good job.
Saturday. And that's on Saturday.
Inka, did you have something else? Okay. Any other committee reports?
I just wanna comment that I wa- was at the Milton House this past weekend for the tea that they had and it was just awesome. And it, I just wanna say that the Milton House is doing so many more different fundraisers now, just keep an eye on it. They, they really have some cool things going on. And also we have a fire commission meeting for Milton, Milton Township Fire tomorrow night.
Yep. Anything else for anybody? Does anybody wanna do staff reports? No, usually nobody does, but Chief?
It's Police Week, so just wanted to remind everybody of that. It's the one week a year where we kind of look towards our police officers, thank them for their service. Yesterday was Police Memorial Day, so that's the, the day of remembrance for those that we've lost at line of duty. And then the, um, festivities, as you could say, happen throughout the rest of the week. So if you get a chance, thank a police officer this week.
Anybody else?
I don't wanna steal any of Mark's thunder, but, uh, there's been a lot of, uh, uh, posts on social media and comments on social media about what's going on with these crazy blue trucks that seem to be blocking traffic at inopportune times. Those are, those are sewer jetting trucks that are preparing for the reconstruction of Madison Avenue in North Clear Lake. So they're, uh, jetting the sewers in advance of that construction. They should be done probably today. Uh, but, uh, I know that they were kind of, I just, I, I don't go on social media all that often and it was even brought to my attention that there was like a lot of posts, like what are these people doing? Why are they blocking traffic? What's happening? So I just wanted to, if, if anybody hears that, that's what, that's what happened. I think they're probably done though.
Is there anything else unexpected that might cause a stir that we should know about?
Yeah, always. Um, no, just, there's gonna be a lot of activity going on with all the infrastructure work that's approved and needed. So I guess we would just ask for patience from the public and travelers and we'll get through it.
Something underground? But they were working overhead.
And I don't think it would be TDS yet, but there has been other work approved for different utilities. There's just a lot of private utility work.
Been a couple of big spools of, of, of cable around and they were moving those.
There is some power line installation.
Oh, it's fiber? So is it part of the TDS stuff? Okay.
You're getting fiber?
Direct all complaints.
Okay, anything else for anyone?
Um, we had a very successful food truck rally, so thank you for everyone who came to it. The weather was amazing. Um, the next one will be August twenty-seventh. And then our summer reading program brochure will be released sometime next week. We have over ninety programs within the three-month period, so we have something for everybody and we're, should be a really fun summer.
Um, Jenny wanted me to talk about the Community Recognition Picnic that is taking place next week already. On Thursday, May twenty-fifth, starts at five-thirty with the program starting at six. The city, we're looking at providing the main course. Um, we're still working the details out on that, but then we're also asking if anybody would like to bring a side dish or dessert to pass as well. Anything I missed, Jenny?
No, I think you've got it, thanks.
And we're in the process of announcing our award winners for this year, which includes Sharla and her husband David. So thank you so much, Sharla, for all of your work this year on the, um, Home Community Bonfire for the Milton Youth Coalition and all of your dedication to them as well. And, um, check out our Facebook page for additional ones.
Anything else for anyone?
Can I just remind everyone that we have a lot of people out there on bicycles and a lot of people out there walking their dogs, pushing buggies and maybe even just walking? So please, please look out for the pedestrians and let them cross the streets. Slow down, please, and don't pass on residential streets. Is that a law? Chief, can you help me with that?
Uh, you're putting me on the spot. Um, it's been a long time since I've worked traffic. Um, I don't know, to be honest. Um, I, I don't wanna say the wrong thing, so I'll look into it, I'll let you know.
That would be great because this councilwoman actually has had several people pass her on Parkview Drive when I am trying to just simply make a left turn, driving the speed limit. Um, and it shouldn't happen that way. It's just really, it, we should all just be, we should all be cognizant that the vehicles that we drive kill people.
That's right. Thank you for the public safety message. Anything else for anyone? Alright, well, since you all studied your team building stuff so much, I promise it'll be painless. You can look it up, man. Just go look it up. I know what you said. Okay, alright. And you can just shout out the answer and then we'll just keep moving, okay? So, um, what is ChatG? GPT?
Artificial intelligence.
I'll take that answer. Anybody else wanna expound on it? Ryan?
I don't know, I was actually gonna say artificial intelligence too, but I believe it's a basically artificial intelligence bot that will respond back information that's gathered throughout the internet.
Who's used it?
Yep, that's right.
Does anybody, who in the article used it?
Jerry Duchesne? Is that his name? No, it was...
Zach Verlink, good job. Okay. Are we keeping points for these? No. Oh, yep, yep, yep. Alright, what does ChatGPT say about Badger Books? What else?
It reduces the time it takes to register by having everything electronic and that Badger Books were first used in twenty sixteen.
Nice, anything else for anybody? Okay, what did the article leave out about Badger Books? So there wasn't any negativity about it. And so the question was only asked about the strengths of Badger Books and, um, there wasn't a question about like, what are the weaknesses of Badger Books?
And Jenny had, uh, one of the weaknesses.
Jenny herself wasn't one of the weaknesses, but she did experience.
At least she didn't admit it.
Yeah.
I didn't know that Tony was also the person asking the question.
Okay. Where do we find information about records retention? State Archives. Anywhere else?
Wisconsin Historical Society.
Yep, where, anywhere else?
Howie Robinson.
General Record Board.
State statutes. You come up to the state statutes and there's one other board. Do you guys remember the board? Wisconsin Public Records Board, yeah. Alright, good job, you guys. See, this wasn't so hard. Alright, what constitutional amendment covers government use of social media? Yeah, yeah, the first. Yep. Yep. Alright, you guys are doing great. What or when? When are contractors exempt from sales tax? Mark, is that correct now? That's right. Alright, so there's two opportunities to shine tonight. There's a bonus and there is, um, like a Jeopardy question. So the bonus question is, who appeared? Now, this isn't the Jeopardy one yet. Who appeared on the front cover of your magazine? Now, this isn't the Jeopardy one yet. Who appeared on the front cover of your magazine?
Right there, those three right there.
Inga, Jenny, and Max.
Okay, so this is the Jeopardy question and, okay, this is a little bit of um, history and kind of current events. So, we had, um, there was a king that we had a coronation. And oftentimes, they talk about Commonwealth, right? Now, here's your Jeopardy question. I gotta find it, cause it's very important that I say it right. What are the two unincorporated islands slash territory, territories in the United States? That use Commonwealth in their full official names? That are not in the, they're islands. I mean, I mean, islands, islands, yes, sorry.
Take an easy route of Guam and Puerto Rico?
Okay, in the form of a Jeopardy question.
What is Guam and Puerto Rico?
Okay, Ryan. You lost all your money, but you got one right. Which one is right?
I would say what is Guam.
You lost all, all the other money too. Puerto Rico and one more, which like I, like I did know this, so.
What is Puerto Rico and the Virgin Islands?
Close. Well, I mean, I mean, like, I don't even know where these islands are, so I should say. It's not in the magazine either. Like, this is just, I'm sorry, this is just something I made up. I think you should ask ChatGPT. It is, that is it, the Northern Mariana Islands. Weird, right? Other like states that have Commonwealth in it, but, okay, so I got that from Wikipedia. Alright.
I, I have one question for you then.
Yes.
How old is League of Municipalities, uh, League of Municipalities this year?
Is it a hundred twenty-five? Yeah. Alright, that said, I don't think that was part of the team building to ask me questions.
I have another question for you.
No.
And, and I've got a question. In, in the League of Municipalities magazine, what staff member appeared, but it wasn't really him, it was a cut-off? That I noticed, looking at the magazine, they said, he looks flat.
There's somebody else that appeared too, that did not look flat. You guys, good job. Next meeting, day June sixth, two thousand twenty-three. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Some moot.
Is there a second? All those in favor? Anyone oppose? Okay, thanks.